Hey, welcome back, folks. It's ten o'clock. We're gonna move on down to our agenda. Our next agenda item is not an action item. This is just an ARPA workshop. And we've kinda come up with a list of things that we're looking at, including some housing issues, broadband, a road department in investment in a new facility, upgrades to the Goldust and Lake Fork site for the roads, fairground investments. We've got quite a few recreation investments we're looking at. Creek Creek Campground, Lick Creek Expansion, Expansion of Warren Wagon, Francie Wallace Parking Lots, Anderson Creek, West 400 State Highway, Campbell Creek, Boulder Lake, Patty Flat, Yellow Pine, Warren Lake. We're looking at kiosks, bathroom facilities, and infrastructure. And then, kind of last on the list is the Planning and Zoning Comp Plan Update. And that would be for a facilitator to do that function, a contractor, and then also to help possibly with the Valley County Soil and Water Conservation District Water Wage Management Plan. What else were we gonna put on there we just talked about?
We've just been talking a little bit about waste. I think that, you know, that needs to stay in the waste yield there.
We've, we're gonna have, what, Sherry, about 2.2 million?
Yeah, we've spent, on the broadband, we've spent about 35,000, I think, has been committed so far, but yeah. We get paid interest on that, too, so that's probably gonna offset what we've already paid. We should be getting, we can, I believe we can go ahead and request our 1.1. The, we have 1.1 we've already received. I think the, the other 1.1 is probably available to request any time now, to get that into our funds, too, which we wanna do, because we do get paid interest on it.
And I think if the public is listening or anybody else has any ideas, we would certainly be willing to look at those ideas and, and add them to the list. I think it's gonna, to me, it'd be kind of end up, you know, what things cost, and we'll rate things and then see how much money we have left to go to the next project, and so forth, so forth down the list, but...
I wanted to talk a little bit about what the thought was behind those sewer and water hookups. So, we, we do not wanna compete against the developers, private industry for employee housing, if we can do something else to help change the cost of housing right now. And there are, that, so, within just the last month, we've been informed that there's a lot of projects that are planned out there. Newspaper showed 800 lots in Donley. We have the ranch that's the south of us, that's 450 lots. McColl's gonna have a bunch. So my thought behind the housing would be that we somehow try and prepay a few hookups within these developments if they meet certain parameters, mainly around deed restrictions for employee housing. You know, that would just help the developer maybe be able to afford a little bit more as far as employee housing. I don't know your guys' thoughts behind that. Just trying to figure out a way to try and help so that, you know, we, we are not builders. We're not developers. We're not going to do that work. We do want to have employee housing, however. So, anything we can do to empower developments, builders, I think, would be important. So those sewer and water hookups, depending on how much it is in each one of the communities, maybe we try and set aside $50,000 for each one of the communities and put into their fund to try and pay hookups, or $100,000 per community, something like that.
Understanding that those go into deed restricted.
Correct.
I think that's brilliant.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, too, but my concern is if we legally can do it. I know yesterday I was reading how the state just gave Micron a big tax break to build more computer chips in Idaho. So there's gotta be the way the counties can do that for local folks as well. But when we looked into this quite a few years back, there was a lot of restrictions on what the county could do. Can we give them tax breaks, give them, you know, the first year or two at a reduced rate or something like that? But a lot of state code won't allow you to do that. So, there'd be some work on our civil side to look at what we can legally do, and what legislature's already stopped.
So, there was a bill this year, and I don't remember if it went through or not, but it specifically called out and amended the verbiage on the, oh, I wish June were here. She can call out that code. We gave it to the Frost Property Management for the projects that they put in for employee housing. And it specifically calls out residential and multifamily under five if it's used for workforce housing. So if that bill passes, that might provide some clarity. So I could put under housing, a tax credit potential?
We did that for Frost. I'm trying to remember, and it was a five-year...
It is five years.
Property tax deferred program, but they had to deed restrict them. Then after five years, the full value comes on, and it had to do something with, it reduces their value pretty significantly the first year, and then it's a little less each year after, until they finally get up to basically full value. And I think that's, so that may be one of the things we could do with this is, it's, and I don't think that we have to replace that lost revenue like the state would have to replace. So, I mean, it may not take any money for us to be able to do that kind of a thing. I think that's something that we could look into, whether we use ARPA dollars or not. Guess what I'm trying to say? I think that's still available. So these developments, like the ones we saw in the news last week, if we come in and said, hey, if you'll take, and I think it's, seemed to me like it was 10 or more units, deed restrict them, we can give you a significant break on the valuation of those, up to five years.
And I think that that is what this legislation is clarifying. And I think we can do some of that anyway, because if it is five or more units, so anything that's...
Is it five or more?
Yeah, I think that's where we're at.
June's here.
That's five or more. So I'll, I will put on this tax credit potential for developers, just so that we can research it and potentially put that out there to, you know, see what the public thinks of that.
And like I say, that's, that's not really a, an ARPA function, but it's not gonna hurt us either. We don't have to replace those funds. It's just a, a break for new construction onwards, so it doesn't really, it's just less funding in your tax drive, but... I know, we talked about it once, for doing another residence on your property. What do they call those?
An ADU.
Like a mother-in-law house. If you wanted to do that for, it wasn't five. It had to be five or more buildings before you would qualify. And we tried to get that changed, but it didn't go anywhere with the legislature. That was four or five years ago. Thinking that that would be a break, reduce that value. And I think the value is significant. It's like 50%, full value the first year, and then it goes, you know, 60%, 70% or whatever.
Well, there's a matrix that you have to fill out. So depending on how many employees you have, I think that you can get up to five years waived, if it, if the matrix, you know.
The issue with single mother-in-law residents or, you know, worker houses, you had to have more than five, five or more. And that's where these didn't qualify.
I think the legislature's trying to avoid that this year, but I don't, I don't know that that has gone through yet.
The issue that you get into trouble with is all the other taxing districts. It affects them as well. And that's where the code kicked in and says, no, you can't do that, because you're affecting EMS or fire, or any, a school district or whatever. You can't do that. The code's pretty specific on a lot of that, but I think it's worth looking into all of it.
Okay, so, the housing, sewer and water hookups, and the tax credit potential for developers, spending some of it that way. Broadband, we will need grant match. If we were able to obtain a $10 million broadband investment, and we probably won't need that much. We, I think we need about $6 million in order to build out the infrastructure that we want. There will be a grant match within that.
Is it 10% or 5%, do you know?
I don't know. That's something that we're gonna have to, to look at. The state, you know, the $100 million that was in there for these types of projects has not yet been funded. So I don't think that there's enough clarity around the language in it yet to actually tell what that's gonna be.
So do you remember when, did McColl get any grants to do theirs? Did they have to match it?
So theirs was a different funding that they've received, because they received, there was CAF funds that went in to that area. Zipley invested a bunch in their CAF funds. And I don't think the Rapid, I don't, I think they funded it with just city funds. I, I, I'm not certain on that.
And I'm assuming if we got a $6 million grant, say, or whatever, that all the cities would have to help with that match.
Yeah, I think the region would have to help, yes. I'll just leave that out there as far as, because the only thing we're going after in broadband is grants. We're not looking at taxpayer funding. Taxpayers will not fund this in any way. So we will have to have something there for grants. Road Department Investments, so we're looking at fairground investments. We've been speaking with them recently, and then also upgrading our facilities in Goldust and Lake Fork with a portion of these funds. Fairgrounds would just, they would love to have that area for their own future investment and get the road department out of there. And I feel like for the community that that is important. When you come into Cascade, that's the very first thing you see, and that's really not what you want for the entryway into your community, but...
Well, and it's, it's kind of been added on to and patched and repatched for the 60 years I've been alive. I think it's time to, to, you know, like, anything, it comes a point when there's no return on trying to keep it looking nice. And, and I, I think it's, uh, will boost morale in the road department as well.
Yeah, agreed. The Fair Board, we had quite a conversation the other night after our workshop here. And first of all, Little, Little Britches Rodeo, the Fair...
Yeah, when did they find out?
So it is large enough for that, so they don't need to extend it. That just needs to be something that, you know, maybe comes back into the area. But if we were able to, to repurpose this into something that we could use as year-round, they're very interested in looking at a long-term building that could be used for events and weddings and, you know, things that we could actually charge and get a return on our investment in that area. So I think that that would be a, a large conversation to have.
Have you guys ever been over to Cambridge and seen that facility?
Yeah, it's nice.
That, to me, is perfectly what we need. That, I don't know how they did it, but it's certainly nicer.
I called and talked to them. They actually had insurance money that came in after a building was destroyed. And then one of their locals gave a, a large investment into that also. So that was a private investment along with some insurance money. So I think that's a, a great conversation to have. Recreation Investments, honestly, I was trying to type as fast as we could, you know, on these. And I, I don't know that we need to call out all of these individually by putting it out there. I think we just need maybe to put out on a survey, recreation investments in infrastructure, campgrounds, parking lots, that type of thing. You guys agree with that?
Well, I think it would be good to see if the public comes up with something. Maybe something we're not even thinking of.
Yeah.
Just, you know, and then to kind of include them in on the process.
And so I'm gonna take out all of these different specific items called out and leave that up to the Recreation Department.
Perfect. That's what I was gonna suggest, too.
Okay, so I will, though, leave in there to give, yeah, infrastructure, so that people, you know, kind of know what we're looking toward, a little bit, anyway. But then also, I, I think on all of these, we just put other and let people fill in their own conversations. So I'll take that out.
I would say signage would be important, like educational signage. We were talking about that last week as well.
So that's kiosks? That's, I think, what I came up with that, but maybe put signage behind it. Signage and education.
Yeah, I think you could take out the specific locations and...
Okay.
Fairgrounds, parking.
Okay, and hopefully Larry has those down, or I guess you have this.
I saved it, yeah.
Planning, then you can look at these areas. And then Planning and Zoning, the Comprehensive Plan Update. You know, they're, they're still working on that, and it might be their comprehensive plan is just fine, and that they're gonna do it within-house. I think we should at least put something in there to see what the community thinks about that. That might be the very first blush as far as getting feedback from the community on what they wanna see. I don't know what Planning and Zoning's gonna come up with, or, you know, how they wanna do that. And I certainly don't want to put our ideas on them. I want that to come from them up.
One of the big advantages that we have on that comp plan now is the GIS. Before, we didn't have GIS, and so this, those maps had to be actually designed hard, somebody to come in and do all that, and now with, with care of, that's a pretty easy, cheap function, and that's been huge.
I think it's good to have a placeholder in there for that, though, Sherry.
I think maybe we just put hire contractors needed, not put a, an amount in there. Maybe it's just somebody to facilitate some public hearings or something like that.
Or do a review, or whatever we need.
Yeah. I did re, just reach out to Dorina on the Valley County Soil and Water District Water Wage Management Plan and just ask, you know, how much would you guys want to do? I think we're gonna have to tell the public what they're doing in order to try and, you know, start that conversation, because most people don't even know what they do. So, they won't have any idea, you know, whether we should be putting money behind it or not. So I think I'm gonna have to get more from them. So if you guys are in agreement with putting these out there and then just putting other and figuring, and having McKenzie draft a survey and then try and get that survey, survey out, if you guys think that we're to that.
I think that's great. I think we're really on the right track as far as having a lot of public input on that.
Is there anything, Sherry, on the campus committee that we should put on there?
Oh, good call, Al.
Is there anything they would like to see?
I, I think that's probably a really good call, because I do think that county planning for facilities needs to have some kind of a funding mechanism behind it. I...
I can even see some internal remodeling costs going on there as well.
Which is the addition of, you know, we were talking about trying to make more office space through, you know, the addition. People still wanna knock down the west, north end, but whatever.
Well, and it could maybe even include some kind of a storage building for all these things that we have to store forever and ever and ever, files and, you know, all this stuff that's in all these different containers and buildings. Maybe we need some offsite building somewhere that we can store this stuff.
So I will put county campus plan. Additions, camp, county campus plan improvements, improvements. I'll try and verbiage this with McKenzie, so she knows. She's out this week, so this is not gonna happen this week.
I mean, that could even include, you know, paving all this stuff out here once they get the leak fixed. We do on our pavement. I don't know, those, things like that.
That's in our budget this year, so that's gonna happen.
I hope this leak gets fixed this year. That's kind of embarrassing.
So maybe building improvements or additions, that might work.
On your first bullet, is that intended for hookups that would be outside of the sewer district so they could annex in, or within the district boundaries, just the costs of, of connecting?
My thought was within district boundaries already, because right now, I know that Payette Lakes is not taking anybody that's not already in their boundaries in. And I know that North Lake just approved those 800 lots in Donley. So I would suspect that they're, they're gonna be looking at everything very carefully on what comes into their, within their boundaries.
Seems like they're all getting to that point where capacity may be at its max.
Well, and we, you know, that's a great thought. I mean, instead of sewer and water hookups, maybe we ask them, I mean, if we put $100,000 into each of your systems, what improvements could you do with that money? Because like Cascade got some ARPA money, but, you know, not a ton. Maybe it's time to see if they have additional needs to upgrade their facilities.
I think the last, and I could be wrong on this, but I think Cascade's looking at a new city hall facility, because the one they have now, I think, is rental, and it's pretty tough shape, but that's their call. But I like your, your, your idea on that. We paid for some of the humpers to pump out at North Lake, Donley, but now they're needing a shed over it that's heated so they can dump in the wintertime. And I think the last I saw, that was a couple hundred thousand dollar facility there. Maybe, you know, if that keeps the cost down to pump septic tanks throughout the county, then I think that's seriously something we need to look at. Instead of $900 to ship it to Payette, we can do it for half that if we keep it here locally or what. Payette can't take it, and Cascade can't take it.
If there's a way to help these sewer districts better understand what their capacity is, plan for the future, and potentially expand their capacity, then you may have broader impact on that, I think, in our bulletin board. Just thinking out loud.
Well, McColl and Cascade, both, the big issue, honestly, is water infiltration into the sewer system from high water every year. And they've, they could get these water, or these sewer lines tight enough where they don't leak water in. I think they would have all kinds of capacity, but...
Yeah, and I guess the thought...
Brian, I don't think anybody can hear you. I was listening to a P&amp;Z workshop the other night, and I couldn't hear anything you were saying.
Well, the, the, the thought on this really came to mind just because of the P&amp;Z workshop and the, and the hearings that I've attended, where there appears to be an emphasis from the P&amp;Z Commission on new developments, wanting, wanting these proposals to come in with doing some due diligence about annexing into sewer districts and, and limiting the number of septic tanks that are, that are being approved on, especially in larger subdivisions. So I don't wanna speak on behalf of the P&amp;Z Commission. I think they're, you know, certainly capable of, of speaking for themselves. But as I'm listening to this conversation, it just, it just reminded me of, of, you know, some of the several recent meetings P&amp;Z has, has really focused on that. So I think they'd appreciate some opportunity to weigh in on, on where you get your biggest bang for your buck on that kind of an investment.
And you know, Brian, it's interesting, because when we had the two-acre size minimums, we had, we didn't have too much concern about the septics. Now we've dropped it down to one-acre parcels, and so we're gonna see a lot more of the, like, Red Ridge. To me, that was probably one that is on the borderline, it should have probably been sewed. But because we had the one acre that allowed them to do it, maybe it's a comp or a code change on our part. Take that up to bigger lots if you want a septic tank. Maybe that's the way to look at that. I don't...
Sure. Yeah.
I don't think they have one-acre parcels. I think their minimum's like three acres.
I don't know. I don't, it could be.
I don't know that that's...
Red Ridge was a large, Red Ridge was a large subdivision, and its proximity is somewhat close to a sewer district just on the outside perimeter. And I think that's what prompted the questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission about, not necessarily, we're gonna require you to annex in, but have you considered this? Have you discussed with Payette Lakes Sewer District? And is there opportunities to, to have those, have those discussions? And I think from just sitting back and listening to those conversations, some of these sewer districts are not really in a position to, to know. They don't know, can we, can we absorb another 200-lot subdivision and be able to service our existing customers and be able to, you know, keep pace with the growth, I guess?
Payette Lakes and North Lake both have master plans going on right now. I don't know that Cascade does, but this might help empower the conversation of having a South Lake Sewer and Water District that partners together with the City of Cascade. That could help that. But, so, Red Ridge is really close to West Mountain Sewer. And that is something that I, I never even really thought about, trying to help that district expand and Jug Mountain expand, because those are both offsite, you know, they're not part of the city.
Yeah, West Mountain is a private.
They're private.
They're private.
But, but still, accomplish, accomplish the goal of minimizing septic tanks and along those lines. So I think, I mean, interesting conversation, maybe something that we can ask the P&amp;Z Commission to weigh in on and give some, some feedback, either as part of the survey or, or some other, some other form. But glad to see that bullet point on your list there, because it's been a, a hot topic of conversation with planning and zoning.
So maybe what we could do is change the wording of just sewer and water hookups and also look at encouraging, I don't know what the word is.
So I just put work with sewer districts on potential needed upgrades. Work? And if sewer districts, I mean, automatically we think three, but honestly, we have five, not six.
Does Yellow Pine have a sewer district? They're all individual.
I think they're all individual. I don't...
Because I think if Midas gets approved, we're gonna see that whole area as well.
So I'll just leave that open, then. Just work with sewer districts.
Anybody have anything else they wanna add to this list? This is the ARPA list. We're looking for public input on these. You know what we're thinking about? We would like to know what you guys, everyone else is thinking about. If there's something you think should be on there, contact us. Contact one of us or, and let us know. And you can certainly put it on the list. I'm kind of assuming that when we get down to the end and we get some costs on some of these things, we're gonna have to prioritize who's first, second, and third, and kind of go from there, but...
I'll get this list out to McKenzie when she gets back next week.
I have one question. Do you have to spend it all now or lose it?
No.
We have until 20, it has to be identified by 2024, spent by 2026.
2024's not very far off.
Not very far away.
Hey, anybody else wanna add on this? If not, we're about four minutes away from our next agenda item. I need to take a little quick break and we'll come back and move on. How was the trip?
Good.
You're so smart on FEMA now, right?
Yes.
FEMA, FEMA.
Is that test?
I bet you did. We had every thought you would.
But I'm still just a little slow on everything else right now. It's pretty intense. It's like...
Do you get clarity on their verbiage changes and all that good stuff?
Well, they emphasize that it's a noun and not a verb.
But they did.
It was a verb and not a noun. Well, the people that were teaching it are the people I've been working with.
Oh, God.
At least in Region 10.
At least everybody will have the same clarity, so...
Yeah, I don't know if...
Did everybody gulp a lot when, blink their eyes a lot?
No, because they all allow development of floodplain anyway.
They all allow? So they've already been enforcing that, base flood elevation?
Well, I, I mostly just talked to my table, because, I mean, they don't give you a lot of, you know, networking breaks. I'll have to talk to the planner from Elmore County and see if she got that. But she was at a different table.
Well, we're glad you're home and safe.
I'm very glad to be back.
And it's always fun to go to those kind of things, but man, is it good to be home. The Commissioners Meeting, we were only down there, I was down there four days, and it was like, oh, I just wanna go home. You sent this to us separately, didn't you? This was not part of our packet. I sent this to you.
Well, this, we'll move on down to our next agenda item, this is, uh, an action item. This is the Kenny Mountain final plant, plat. Uh, Cinda, you're up, I guess this is a what, a two lot split?
Yeah, it's a two lot subdivision of a twenty acre parcel resulting in a seven point six and a two point four. Acre lots, this is going up Little Donner on the west side where you see the fish.
It's twenty acres, seven point six and two point four, that's only ten.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, got it.
Right, a two point four. There were some different challenges with this one compared to, um, most others because they wanted the two access points from highway fifty five. So they had to work with Idaho Transportation Department on that. Um, and I guess they're selling off the seventeen acre one and retaining, uh, lot two, which already has a shop on it with no plans of residential development. So that, you know, caused some different things to happen. Planning and zoning commission wanted it approved as a residential lot.
There's the, the road on the second one, the big lot, it comes into lot two and then it dead ends there, where does that go?
Well, they had to dead end it for ITD and they actually have one going up to the shop right now, it's where Mike Kenny used to have his. Shop and then they have the access just north of that that goes up to their existing house.
See if I can find it on.
So they're, in reality, we're already two access points, but the southern one, the fire department has some concerns with. Um, so before we approve a residential lot, a residential structure on that, he wants the driveway to be, uh, less than ten percent. And so that's note ten.
Well, this is across the highway from Smalley Lane entrance.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm with you.
So the approval from planning and zoning required approval from ITD, so ITD has, has signed off on this.
Yes.
Okay, and the letter of approval from Cascade Fire.
We have the letter of approval, but he wanted to note saying that before we issue a building permit for residents. They have to decrease that grade because he'll have to be able to turn his fire truck in there and.
As part of our motion, do we need to include that, uh, letter and how?
No, it's on the face that we hadn't put it on the face of the plat, so it can be tracked.
Okay, perfect.
Um, did Jeff have a chance to? Input on this one?
It doesn't use a county road.
That's not a county road?
No.
Those are all private.
All private, all off highway fifty five.
What's the road that's on up towards the top of Little Donner that was too steep that they wanted to in, into the Crown Point area that?
Crown Point, isn't it?
And we don't plow that road because of too, too steep as well.
This is quite a bit south of that, this is just before you get to the.
Just before you, before you start up the hill.
On to your entrance and you go.
Yeah.
The only other thing, uh, different about this one is, um, there are sanitary restrictions installed for lot two. Cause they didn't do all of their per testing ahead of time, planning zoning commission was aware of that. But they have funded all of that with Central District Health. You know, the condition was that they had to prepay all of that and then they can go through their testing. So that is different than what we typically do.
Do you know Cinder W, how much something like that costs? What's that for Center District?
Eight hundred and some dollars.
Eight hundred dollars.
Oh, I thought we dropped that.
I think it, I don't think it has anything to do with us, that's the cost of the guy to go out and dig the hole and Tom White to go out and look at it.
Engineering reports, it's for Tom Wyatt or Jack to go out and look at it. The applicant or the property owner is responsible for actually having the hole dug.
Well, it kind of depends on who pays for it based on the real estate contract, so.
Well, I know we talked about this and the counties are going to have an influence on that now since we're taking over funding for the health districts. So we're going to have an influence on what that permit fee cost is. And I know we dropped it.
The cost.
We dropped it from the year before, but I think this must include also the backhoe and all that stuff as well.
I don't think it does include the backhoe, it's just their engineering reports. They have to do the, the soil analysis and things like that. That's the extent of my knowledge of soil testing.
Well, that might be the next class you go to.
It could be.
Well, I know we're having, we're going to get two septic guys up here this year for the health district.
Well, Tom's gone. And it's Jack and they're going to find somebody else, I guess.
Tom's gone?
That's what I heard, heard you. Yeah, last week.
Tom White, I didn't hear that.
Interesting, I haven't heard that yet.
We'll find out, we have a, uh, district next Friday or this Friday, gosh, it's this one.
Setting fees, remember that, yeah.
But we did that.
Hire a backhoe guy to go out there too, and it's, it's getting expensive to do that.
I don't think Central District Health hires the backhoe.
No.
What I'm saying is keep the permit from CDH down because then you also have to hire a backhoe guy. Last one that I had done was like eight hundred dollars for all of it.
You could go out there and do it with a shovel for free.
Go for that, I want to watch you do it.
The sanitary restriction really is different than, uh, the permit for the septic. It's, it's different for the whole subdivision process, but you should look at to make sure that those fees are only for the actual costs. To review and permit it and not a income generation.
No, it's not an income, we're like, most places, we can only make like two or three percent on that. What they do is they take last year's number of permits divided by the cost of the labor and that includes vehicle and all that stuff. And that's how they determine those figures and it's like, so then you have a year where you get a whole bunch. Your, your permit is going to seven or eight a day, then those costs come down. So basically what that's telling me is we have too many permit guys in the system. Cause they don't have enough work to make it efficient, but.
We might be off topic.
Oh, we are way off, so I need to motion again.
It's all about Central District Health, I did write you a motion.
I need that motion to approve this.
I moved to approve the final plat for the Kenny Mountain subdivision and authorize the chairman to sign the plat.
I'll second that.
Please say in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
This one was probably the hardest two lot subdivision we ever did.
Today's what, twenty third?
Today is twenty first.
Twenty first.
Twenty first, thank you.
Are you guys the one keeping the shop or are you keeping, yeah?
Yeah, we're, we're going to keep the shop.
And we did have septic approval already. It's just when they do the subdivision process, it had to go through the whole engineering and not just the regular perk of proof. It's already been, if it was a regular septic, then go through the more of the process.
And they got confused between the perking and, and the, uh, engineering for the sanitary removal, so it's just. We're all good now.
More of a transitional phase maybe there.
It was a lot of personal pressure because, um, my, my son's brother is the father of their grandchild. There was a lot of personal pressure.
It's, it sounds like this is a greater conversation. We probably don't need to have today.
That's really good.
We haven't even talked about it then.
We're really off task now. Your son's brother, that doesn't.
Come on, you know my family.
I know, I know.
I actually heard Tom was going to be done if he was not, that's the thing I heard from Tom.
We had a whole bunch of people retire, health districts go through the same thing, they, they're not paying enough. Boy, these guys are getting sucked out everywhere.
I think Tom was still trying to drive back and forth because he couldn't find housing.
Oh, my goodness, that's miserable.
I think there's another guy because they've got, that covers the, what's, what's his name, the Cascade area now, because Tom was just two.
Jack, neither.
Zach.
Jack.
Jack.
He was doing, I think he still drives.
That's an issue. Hey, thanks you guys.
Big issue.
Our next agenda item, we got about seven minutes.
Maybe they need to try and partner with somebody else and.
Yeah, speed a look. Remember we talked about Brian?
Yeah.
This is Gary's place and then.
Maybe they just need to try and find another partner there though. Well, no, because then they kick out our employee.
Might, yeah, might, that was exactly right. They had about, we have about four hundred thousand to spend on it, but it's like, I don't know where to find that. I had not heard that about Tom.
Guess I better quit calling his phone number. You know, I, I kind of feel like maybe we need to. Talk to Phil and see what his plan is down here, if we could solidify, you know, some units down there with him.
Good luck, you see, you can buy him.
Better not discuss that on, online.
No.
Still try to find a developer that might work over here too. Tell you what, everybody is, we need to keep families here, that's all I know, we need to keep young families here. Because we're, we are already an aging demographic and every single time I see one of these houses go up. It's six or seven hundred thousand dollars today, that's a Valley County family leaving.
Yep.
And that is absolutely frightening to me.
Cascade picked up four new students just last week.
Good.
Better know where these people are living.
We're the only ones with anything that's even slightly affordable right now. Nothing in call, and I just read an article this morning on Zillow that. Zillow's projecting year over year growth in the country is going to be at twenty two percent in May. Which is on top of twenty last year or twenty one last year and they're prophesizing at least eighteen percent growth over the next few years nationally.
Probably got that manufactured home park application.
Oh, good, how many units is it?
Two hundred.
Two hundred, okay.
They didn't have them go by next summer.
Not this summer, but next summer.
Where's that, Cinda?
Adjacent to the Meadows at West Mountain.
Over there on the south end there? Yeah.
Uh, P and Z actually set a special meeting in anticipation so they can focus on just that.
Well, I see they got their permit from North Lake to hook up to the sewers, so that's good.
That's totally different one, yeah. Tyler Hass is out at the end of, uh, Norwood, Norwood goes into that big open field.
Yeah.
That's Tyler Hass has two hundred units there and Craig Groves has six hundred units that's headed north on the west side of the road.
Highway fifty five.
I'm sorry?
Highway fifty five.
Highway fifty five.
North of Donley, yeah.
Help me go into the city.
You know, Gabby, is anybody from Mountain Water Works going to show up? Why don't you know this? I don't know either.
They haven't requested a Zoom meeting though.
It's gonna be a quick meeting if we don't have anybody to give an update.
I guess you guys can fill me in.
Hopefully they'll be here. Jeff's not going to be here, Jeff's out of, he's on vacation right now, is he?
I think so. He keeps beckin'.
That might be Mickey.
Pittsburgh landing.
Oh, you're not supposed to tell anybody where he's at?
Oh, that's right.
His phone doesn't work and he doesn't want anybody knowing. Not a scary road.
Not that scary.
If you said, yeah, I know.
Six thousand pound, seven thousand pound boat on a piece of crap dually truck, no big deal. Our problem was never going down, it was always coming back up when it was a hundred and five.
No, thank you.
Oh, it's a nice road, you need to go down the Klein Schmidt grade if you want a road that'll make you.
I was hyperventilating on that.
Lower in your seat.
What road is that?
Klein Schmidt grade.
About a Bear Coopram.
Oh, my gosh.
That's the ri- road that comes into the snake just before you get down to Hills Canyon Dam.
It's worse than the one out of.
It's a good road.
Tell me how to get there.
Well, you want to take a four wheel drive.
You go straight, when you get into council, you just go straight, right?
Go back through Bear Coopram.
Take the bypass where the old gas station is down there on the corner by the fair or the park, just go straight up and over.
I told Fred I wanted to go for a drive there on Mother's Day two years ago.
Should have put you on the back of his dual sport.
So we went, yeah, no.
Yeah, that would be good.
Got halfway down there and then got a flat tire. So I'm watching as we're headed back to council, that tire gauge go. And going, Fred, if we get a flat tire, I'm on the Klein Schmidt, we're in trouble.
Have you been to Bear Coopram?
Around to that road up by Riggins? You know, Seven Devils?
No. Oh, there's no road that connects up there.
Dead ends.
It just goes around the south end basically of that. Whatever the south end of the Seven Devils are down there and then drops right into the Hills Canyon, Canyon down there.
Drops is the word.
It's worse than the one coming out of, uh, Riggins up to Bergdorf from what I've heard.
I've been on that one, that was a.
Yeah, I don't like that road at all, I have to have a paper sack over my nose when I hit some of those corners with Fred.
We just go slow. What's interesting is we had just come over the top there, going down, we went this way. And here's this lady without backpack, got a backpack, walking up the dirt road, it's hot. Hey, you need any help? No, but do you have any water?
Yeah.
So we gave her a couple bottles of water.
Wow.
Just out there alone, backpacking.
Gabby, who put that on the agenda for Mountain Water Works, do we need to try in?
Doug did, he says he does, he thought they were supposed to be in person, I'm checking now, there was no teams set up, so I'm just checking to see if there's an email that came through.
I reviewed that, I can explain it, but without Jeff, I don't know if you feel comfortable approving it or not.
Without Jeff?
Well, this is the Water Works, not, not the bridge.
This is the I Works contract?
We're not quite there yet.
No, that's NIX. Uh, Water Works was the new water line, you know, and all that stuff through town.
Can't offer anything there.
I Works is just an ongoing contract.
Right, it's just a renewal of an existing.
So they had a big seventy foot sand filter system and a big concrete vault back there and it cracked. On the earthquake back there, so they got to go in and either line that or re-pour that whole. Deal within all the lines coming out of it, down the road and into town are all leaking up the road everywhere. So they got a pretty good grant to go and replace all those water lines in Yellow Pine.
I think they were working on the grants for, for the water lines. I think that's when we did that fifty thousand dollar gen grant and then we had the earthquake and that's when everything cracked, it was like.
Yeah, we had.
Then we had some change of people that were kind of overseeing the project back there and some of those folks got. Ears crossed and some people left and new people came in and. See, we'll see where it is, but if they're not here, we'll have to postpone it.
Let me just call and see if. Definitely do have a.
Okay, wait, wait, I got an email just a minute ago, I'm saying from Christina. Saying she doesn't have a link to the meeting and asking if someone can send it.
Can you do that?
Set up a team's link.
If not, we can postpone until next week, Gabby, it's not a big deal.
Do that one, they've. I don't know that I've ever done it, but here, I'll do it for you.
Just copy her email.
Email, okay.
Um, just copy the section of it. There you go. Just maybe right click on it. So now go over desktop. So, now go over desktop.
Right to my desktop?
Yep, go to Teams, Microsoft Teams. And now, just hit new meeting. We want to meet now, maybe, but close and hit meet now, so we don't have to start that one. Hit meet now.
Yeah, we should hit it. Yeah.
Should I be at email? Down to your email. Try and copy that Teams.
Start meeting, okay?
We'll start the project. Up to the meeting, party next. Sweep it over, ready. Go up over here, because it's hers. I'll push it over there.
Hey Christina, can you hear us?
Hello, yes, I can hear you. How are you doing today, commissioners?
Another day in paradise.
It looks like it. Um, when I talked with Doug last week, my intention was to come there and be there in person and I had to meet with my surgeon on Friday, late afternoon, and he told me I had to quarantine this week because I have a surgery on Monday, a week from today, so that was rather unexpected, but that's the world we live in, so, um, I apologize for not being there with you all today.
Okay, we can still talk.
Perfect. So, um, it's been, it's been a while since I have spoken with the commissioners and staff there. And Mary Rosen and I and Douglas all thought it would be a good idea for me to just give a little update on what's happening with Yellow Pine. So, as the three of you know, Valley County supported an emergency post-disaster grant application with the Department of Commerce. Um, as you know, the water system in Yellow Pine did undergo significant structural damage and underground water line transmission main damage. Um, we are currently working on the water line damage. Um, there's about two thousand feet or so of water line main that we are in the process of replacing. We have all of the designs and the plans that have been reviewed by both D E Q and USDA Rule Development, their engineering staff. Those plans and specifications have been recently approved. Um, we are in the process of getting all of the easement documentation in place. Currently, it is not in place. Um, Yellow Pine unfortunately is like many systems that we see throughout the state of Idaho that do not have the proper easement or right-of-way actually recorded with the county. So, we've been working with your county folks there as well as the four impacted landowners. Uh, some of the existing water line is in the right-of-way, but some is actually on people's private property and that was probably due to the original construction being conducted kind of on a handshake and yeah, we'll put that in some sort of writing somewhere along the way and it didn't quite happen, and so as this is being funded by Commerce, USDA and D E Q, um, there are requirements that those easements are put in place, so we're working with all of the landowners, the board members, the community members and the county to get that done. And it is a little complicated because there are some landowners that are not currently at their secondary residence in Yellow Pine right now, so that's been a little bit of an issue, but, um, we are working through that. We do have about, uh, three different construction companies that are interested in bidding on, um, this piece of work. This, as you know, is kind of going to be a larger, uh, a larger project effort. As I mentioned at the beginning of this conversation, there's obviously, there's significant structural damage that was, um, that occurred after that big earthquake about two years ago. Um, that's on that really big sand filter structure, I think that you all are quite familiar with. Um, that was actually also another, uh, another point of conversation that we probably need to talk about is the regarding that sand filter building. There was originally a gem grant that was procured by somebody there in the county and Yellow Pine. Um, and that does need to be sent back essentially to the state of Idaho, um, that because we're just, there's no way that we can even get that work completed on that on that structure, um, within the timeframe. So, because our concentration is on the replacement of the broken transmission main first. And then we will go back to, um, looking at the larger uh, structures that obviously do need some additional work. So, I just kind of wanted to give a little update on where we're at. We're hoping that we'll be able to wrap up all of the easement documentation here within the next couple of weeks. Get that recorded with the, the county. And work with USDA, D E Q and Commerce to get all the documents in place, to then publicly bid and award the project and get that broken transmission main replaced as soon as possible, hoping that that will be done this summer. So, that's the work that we are currently involved in.
Christina, that grant was secured by the Economic Development Council?
Yeah.
So, I think that, um, I mean, it's a request grant. We didn't receive the funding, I'm sure, to have to send it back, but is there any way that we can actually request an extension on that? I mean, are we even close to working on what the original grant request was or no? So, just let them re-allocate those?
Yeah, Commissioner, we are not, unfortunately. We're not close to being able to work on that at all. Um, it's going to require that particular structure is going to require some evaluation. Uh, additional evaluation. There was a preliminary evaluation conducted by a structural engineer after the that, that damage. I think I showed you photographs of that of the sheer cracks that are, that are, um, on the external sections of that building. But we're gonna have to have, you know, um, the structural engineers and, you know, with another firm, we don't do that in-house. Sorry, I have a little animal jumping on me, the wonders of working from home.
Usually a child, so don't worry about it.
Yeah.
So Christina, what is, what is the plan then? To get somebody to come in and look at that, that sand filter, is there a possibility that you can line it with some kind of impermeable membrane on the inside to keep the outside water from getting in? Is that is that gonna be looked at? I think, um, to me, that seemed like the easiest way to fix that was an internal liner. I don't know. I don't know enough about it.
And you're correct, the, um, the drinking water system operator, Warren Drake, has actually been, um, watching that and I believe that that was something that he was going to be doing. Um, I have not talked to Warren about that specific part of the, the project, but I can certainly follow up with Warren and just see what um, types of mitigation efforts that he and, and the board members have put together. Um, I do know that it's, uh, that it is functional. I mean, they do have drinking water, it's just that it's not the, the most advantageous, um, position right at the moment, and so that structure does need to be looked at, um, but that will require a separate you know, evaluation from structural and water engineers working with Warren on that. Um, but I do think that Warren's got some mitigation, um, you know, plans, not only plans, but I think he is implementing the mitigation right now. I, I'm happy to follow up with him on that and I can send an email back over to, through Douglas um, and Mary, um, if that would be helpful.
I'm a little confused. Maybe you could tell us, so, the sand structure's not I mean, it is working to a certain degree. There's still boiling water, but the delivery system you're working on first before you work on the source.
Yes. We, um, we went round and round, oh, I'm sorry.
Wasn't that a new seventy-foot containment? Wasn't that new? Not too many years back and then we had the earthquake and it cracked it. It's not like
That's correct.
Yeah.
So, but if you have water that is currently not drinkable and now you're gonna put that water into pipes, brand-new pipe delivery system, aren't you contaminating what you're doing?
Well, the water, I think, is coming in through the pipes. Downstream from the sand filters, water seeping into the lines.
Just like a clay pipe, isn't that what's out there now?
Yeah, it's a really old clay.
It's a really old, yeah, they're, they're, uh, surface lines, um, that were put in, um, with materials. I, I, it's my understanding from talking with the engineers, um, that really is made more for mining materials, not water. So, it's very old, uh, pipe, not to drinking water construction standards. Um, there is infiltration from groundwater, so it actually is treated water, Commissioner, that's being pushed through this line to the actual residents that are using it. Um, but then there's infiltration due to the cracking, um, that occurred after the earthquake, so
Thank you for that clarity. Are you finding that the landowners that you're working with are willing to give those easements?
I, yes, I would say that three of the four, um, the fourth owners, uh, they recently purchased a, a larger they, they purchased a parcel that was m- made of a larger parcel. Um, so Janice Richter is the original landowner. She owns quite a lot of property up there. Um, she partitioned off a section of her property and just happens to be, um, there's a little bit of a water main, the original water main and the replacement section, um, that we're identifying, that will be where the replacement line will go, that is on, um, new property owners. So, we're trying to get those, there's two ladies that they co-own the property, and so we're trying to get them up to speed on what the project is, what the purpose of the project is, trying to give them kind of an education on what it means to have an easement for a public utility, what it means for the greater community. Um, they just were, so they there's been a lot of conversations that have had to happen to have that education, you know? I think that that is just a natural we're kind of naturally like, um, you know, territorial over our, our property as we should be. Um, and they were not there when the original earthquake occurred or the original discussions. So, as, I think as soon as we can kind of get through that, we certainly move forward. We do have an alternative design, uh, but, and what that would mean, um, commissioners would mean that we could bypass, uh, you know, if these two ladies decide that it's not, um, in their best interest to have the easement and the replacement, uh, line on their property, we can bypass that section and just what that means is that there's a little less actual pipe that gets to go into the ground, um, due to cost. So, we're hoping that they, that we will all be able to have just a meeting of the minds and understand, um, you know, sorry, you see that little
Funny cat video.
Little cat there back there? That's my daughter's kitten that I'm like kitty-sitting, so, yeah.
Well, she's not hurting anything.
Yeah, I, it seemed, every now and then when I get on a Teams call, she suddenly just jumps right up, so I'm
Well, thank you for the update. Is there anything we can do to help? I'm sure you'll let us know. Um, I think you'll find those people pretty amiable, go back there and, and to work with. It sounds to me like these last two ladies just need to have, have a conversation and then probably will work out just fine.
Yeah, I think it will. Um, they're, they're both very nice, intelligent women. I think it's just, once again, it's just about understanding what a you know, a public utility easement really is, you know, so but, um, I do appreciate your time and I'm sorry that I couldn't be there in person, but I think the next time that, um, that I'm able to give an update, I will be there in person, so
But we're looking forward to seeing you.
Yeah.
Good luck on your
Thank you, and I, and I will, thank you. I will get back to you. I'll, um, I'll go through Douglas and Mary. Um, uh, but I will get back to you on the mitigation that Warren, uh, is including right now, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page, okay?
All right, you need, you can bring your cat if you want.
No, you can't. I'm allergic to cats.
I don't think so.
All right, have a good day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Goodbye.
Well, I'm gonna have to tell the E D C to undo our request with Department of Commerce. And maybe Mary can do that. Um, that may have been turned over to Mary when she came on board.
Yeah, that kind of probably is a function if I'm thinking about it.
Well, the E D C had
Remember how much that was for? Was it?
Fifty thousand.
Yeah. Tough to walk away from.
And we may be able to reapply at some moment when they, they ever get there, but I can't believe that they couldn't actually use it. I mean, if Warren's working on that, they could have used it for something on that sand trap, but
Okay, we're gonna move on down to our agenda. Our next item is an action item. This is to sign the I Works service agreement. And Hope, I think you were gonna talk to, about this. Where'd it go? No, you said it.
It was in our pack.
Yeah, I just gotta find it.
So, the, um, I Works agreement was submitted for my review. Uh, I had a couple of, uh, back-and-forth conversations with Jeff about the subscription service. This is a, really, it's a two-part agreement. The first part that is being uh, is up for renewal is for the survey work that this contractor does, or the road department helps, uh, Jeff keep track of road data. There's a subscription that is a companion agreement that goes along with this. This was a three-year term subscription and it's really just about data storage. Uh, and there's a, there's a fee, that's how this company makes money, is they come and do the survey work for free, but then charge you to store the data for a three-year period of time. We, instead We, instead of structuring this as an annual agreement like we ordinarily would, uh, they were willing to, uh, give us a three-year term, but just bill it out for one, a, a one-time payment instead of over three years. So you'll see, uh, you'll see that, uh, subscription payment will be, uh, due uh, immediately upon the signature of the, of the contract, but then we'll have a, a, a three-year data storage agreement with this particular company. So, uh, as Jeff described it, to me, this has been a company or a contractor that, that he has used for several years now and, uh, wants to continue on with that relationship.
So the annual subscription fee is seventeen fifty, so I'm assuming then for the three-year deal, um, fifty-two fifty, but that does not include the second part of the agreement?
No, the, the second part of the agreement is just for the survey work and there's no charge for that.
Oh, okay.
So it's fifty-two, whatever it was, uh, one-time payment for three-year data storage.
Fifty-two fifty.
Fifty-two fifty, yep.
I haven't looked at this with Jeff before. This is amazing software.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, uh, helps him, helps him keep, uh, the data at his fingertips.
This is how he looks at the blue line, too. Does a lot of work with the blue line on this.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to sign the I-Work service agreement.
Removed.
Would you second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Debbie Woodstock's, office number seventy-one oh two. Okay, our next item is also an action item. This is a sign of a public works agreement for asset and data tracking services. And the name of the company is Public Works One Incorporated. And I'm assuming this is just the data for that I-Works. And this one, there is no cost.
I'm gonna that we approve the Public Works One agreement.
Would you second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The whole pond has movie night tomorrow night, Seven Brides for Seven Brothers. When's the last time that was shown anywhere? I'd drive up there, just go see that.
Where do they hold that? The center, community center?
Look at the picture that came off one of their webcams, two eagles fighting. Who is that?
Sure they're not making little eagles?
I don't know. I might be able to tell you a story about that. I thought a duck was trying to kill another duck that was in my pond one time. So I'm chasing him off. My dad goes, "You idiot, you risk on the farm. What are you talking about?"
Trying to drown him. Well, the birds are back.
I heard red wings the other day. I think it was yesterday morning.
I got yellow, or gulf inches all over my feeders. About thirty of them. Little tiny yellow birds are beautiful.
Bald eagle and a golden eagle, uh, riding over a, uh, Canadian goose carcass that, uh, got clipped by the power line.
Oh.
Yeah, cool.
Was on YouTube last night and watched a bald eagle kill a coyote.
Oh, wow.
That was a fight.
A bald eagle killed?
Killed a coyote, reached down there and just. Finally.
Wow. So do you guys know, is the canyon closed right now?
Monday through Thursday, ten to two.
So they have started the ten to two stuff?
Yeah, fifteenth. Yeah, I went down Friday.
You caught?
No, they're not doing it Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It's Monday through Thursday.
I gotta go down and get my granddaughters today, so I gotta wait until two to get through there. Or go the other way.
That's a long ways.
Oh, long ways.
Man, that's a long ways going the other way.
So, the, yeah, so starting Monday, March fourteenth, construction on the fifty-five, drivers can expect one-way alternating traffic for fifteen-minute delays as crews anchor the hillside. And then full road closures are anticipated to start in mid-April. So did you actually?
I got stopped. Yeah, well, I got stopped on Friday. And I mean, it took me like all of six minutes to get through. I did, as I was driving into the construction area from the Rainbow Bridge, have a pile of rocks and debris come down the hill, not where they're working, which was exciting, because I was looking up at it. I was just starting to warm up enough that that stuff was getting loose at the top.
Great.
Hey, Brian, did you see that, um, Senate Bill thirteen twenty-seven on the civil commitments? That we're not gonna be held liable for those costs?
Oh, I, yes, I've been, I've been hearing some things about that.
That's huge. Hmm?
Is that still?
Um, the bill has been delivered to the governor for signature.
There was some discussion last year about this issue, too. I think it just kind of died on the mind, but.
Well, it talks about the DE and the transportation. So maybe if we have to transport, it would be, we might get reimbursed for some of that.
Costs, costs now are for five days of commitment.
Um.
Back to the counties, and so this will shift that all over to health and welfare.
Health and welfare, yeah.
That will be great.
Well, and the other part of it, too, is the EMS ran a bill where they can get compensated by Medicare for transfers. Like if they transfer somebody to Cascade and McCall down to one of the hospitals down below, they were getting paid for that. And it was like, you're crazy. Why isn't that a billable expense? And I th- I think that one got passed, too, but. Remember when they came in here years back and said, "We're not gonna do transports anymore, because we're losing." And the big sales tax bill is gonna be, um, postponed this year, but it'll be back next year. Well, here it is, Senate Bill twelve eighty-three.
Jerry, do you know what the median price for houses are in the county right now?
Median price is like five hundred, I mean, it's right around five hundred up here, five twenty-five, something like that. But I mean, that's just a misnomer. There has been no sales under that. I mean, I bet truly it's, if you look in the last twelve months, it's closer to eight hundred.
Well, I was gonna say, I was just reading an article from the Statesman. They were talking about median price in February of this year for Boise was five forty-nine, that they've had a two hundred and, or a two-hundred-and-forty percent increase since twenty-twelve.
Um, twelve eighty-three, is that the bill that you were talking about?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if you ever look at, um, IAX Bill Tracker. It, I have really been following this this year. It's really, it's great. Uh, that one was signed on the.
Yeah.
Sounds like they're gonna try and get out of there this week.
Oh, Cascade City Road is owned by the city.
We may have gotten a portion of that Gem Grant Award that we have to actually send back.
How's Pat, do you? Not going on spring break somewhere? Going to Florida and laying on the beach?
Please.
It does.
We're gonna go camping over at CBA Strike.
Move. Take a boat and go fishing? On the bank? Okay, we're gonna move on down to our agenda. Our next item is an action item. This is a request for leave donation for a new employee, Pat.
You can barely even reach that thing.
Nor can you see me around it, right? Um, we have a new employee in dispatch and dispatch is actually asking for this. So we have a new employee, got COVID, doesn't have enough time accrued to be able to, or to have it all paid. And so dispatch has asked if the other dispatch employees can contribute to, uh, that person's leave while they have had COVID. A very simple, short thing. It's not gonna go out to the rest of the county. It's just for them, their little group.
And our policy says what, they have to be here for six months before they qualify?
Have to be a year and qualify for FMLA.
Okay. Well, this is kind of an exception to that policy.
Yes.
And I think as long as it stays in that department, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
There isn't any COVID funding left that anybody can apply for, correct?
No, we did away with that a long time ago. There wasn't funding anyway, so, I mean, it, we had some until, um, Jul- June? Was it March? Might've been March of last year. There was a tax break only and we, you know.
I don't have a problem with keeping it within that department.
Okay, so I think that should be part of the motion, that it stays interdepartmental. I would entertain that motion.
Move that we allow the dispatch employees to donate to a new employee or leave request, that it remain within the dispatch division only.
Move to second, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Cool, thanks.
Bada bing bada boom.
Yeah, easy, easy, easy.
And you're gonna be here for the service awards?
Yes.
Okay, then we're gonna move on into our next agenda, which is also an action item. This is a selection of replacement commissioner for boards committees held by Commissioner Dave Bingaman. And Dave, could you give us a quick synopsis of what you're doing now? I know you're doing waterways.
I was gonna ask Jerry for an updated list. I don't have the last list that we had, but, um, yeah, I mean, in a nutshell, Stip Night, Waterways, uh, Groomer, Waterways Advisory Committee and the, uh, new management plan, uh, Winter Rec Forum, Pay-Force Coalition, uh, Land Allocation Committee when they start back up.
This is a Pay-Force Coalition and the Land Allocation Separate Deals?
They are. So the Land Allocation Group generally meets the Wednesday night before EFC. It's mostly non-agency folks, user groups.
What do you call that pay, land allocation?
That's the Land Allocation Committee.
Is this a subcommittee of the Coalition?
It is.
Okay.
They've been looking for, they just started back up, didn't they?
Yeah, they're gonna start up the twenty-ninth, actually, so.
And you're on the groomer advisory, too?
I am.
Okay. So I got Waterways, Stip Night, what's, when do you meet on those?
Uh, Stip Night is kind of off and on on Thursdays right now.
Every Thursday or once a month?
No, off and on. They don't have a meeting, like they had, went, you know, a month and a half without having a meeting and then they have, you know, two meetings back-to-back, but it varies.
So I, I have a question. Um, until we know who replaces you and what their skillsets are, I, I just have a hard time, you know, with us trying to figure out who's doing this.
That's what I was gonna ask as well, is I think this is like.
Need to wait until after.
Two weeks out or three weeks out.
Yeah, wait until, you know, whoever's skillsets are there, whoever, you know, we feel like would be a good fit. In the meantime, if there is, you know, within the next month, something that we have to engage with, and I, I say, you know, we go ahead and look at that and see which one of us can cover it in the meantime. But I would hate to assign things and then thirty days from now, we're gonna be reassigning things anyway.
And, and I will say, like, the Stip Night meetings, like, we honestly, we do not need to participate in every single one of those. A lot of them are very technical. Um, they don't really pertain to what we're doing, you know? And they generally discuss, you know, like, water quality issues that are above and beyond, I think, our, our pay grades.
So Dave, do you feel like it's been fruitful to be a part of that group, though?
I think it's good for us to know what's going on and listen in, get the minutes, read through the, you know, the agendas and things like that. The, um, you know, input that we gave for this last round of the draft environmental impact statement com- comments probably was very important. It was the second round of comments that we've given them, obviously. And I think that as that progresses, we wanna keep discussing, you know, our, our joint plans with them.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it's important to stay involved, but I, I also, like I said, there are meetings, you can look at the agendas and decide, you know, I- So, I think it's important to stay involved, but I, I also, like I said, there are meetings. You can look at the agendas and decide, you know, hey, this is probably not one that I need to be involved with.
Well, I think one of the things we gotta really think about is making sure that we keep Commissioner Mopin on the YCAP committee. I think that's important.
I, you know, the work that she's done, I, I agree a hundred percent.
Daggers. I did just say I would look at their HR policies with them.
Yeah, and you know, as I said, one of the things too is that I wanted to throw out there too, is that, you know, I think Larry is gonna probably assign me to some of those committees anyways, the ones that are recreation-based, um, once I transition.
Probably the coalition maybe? Pay Coalition or the lands committee?
For sure the land allocation, and, um, you know, that was one of the questions I was gonna ask you guys is, you know, do you think that we need triple representation on, you know, like, we, or the, we see, or the Pay-At-Forest Coalition meetings?
Well, I'm on the Boise Forest, but so is Larry, and the reason why is because there's a conflict sometimes that I can't make it. So, I wanna have, make sure somebody's there for Valley County.
Yeah, as I say, I think there are recreational issues that come up that would be important, you know, for the new position to be involved with. But that was just one of the things I was gonna throw out there is, you know, like, I don't, I don't know exactly what his list of responsibilities for me will be yet.
I think some of the things, like pathways, I mean, I don't know that as commissioner, we're adding anything to that national pathways. I think that's...
I was already told that I was gonna be taking that. I think the meeting's over for that.
Strong point. You gotta stay on there.
Yeah, anything that I think, you know, is recreation-based.
Yeah.
Um, I, we can certainly have a conversation. I think definitely the strategic planning group needs to have a commissioner on it. I think you guys will be the lead on that, but I think that needs to have somebody on it. I don't think recycling's even meeting. I think the pathways collaborative can definitely be you guys. Snowmobile advisory committee, I don't, you know, that's not something that I have a skillset for, and certainly I know Larry and, you know, you guys could disseminate that and bring us anything we need. Land allocation, we need somebody on there. They are discussing.
Well, you know, the groomer advisory is probably not gonna be meeting now until next winter, so we might have time to...
Well, and there also is winter rec.
As I say, I, I can guarantee that I'll continue to be involved with winter rec and the land allocation.
Okay.
So, you wanna stay on those, okay?
Well, the land allocation.
Well, that was my question, Altis. Is, is that something where we need a commissioner and, you know, the rec director and rec planner on all, all three on that call?
No.
I mean, it, it certainly doesn't hurt anything.
Well, I think you and Larry need to figure out, though. I don't know that you guys should all be on the same call for certain. I mean, you guys need to disseminate that, you know, however you do it within the department, but I mean...
Guess my feeling on the winter rec is I think it's okay for now, but if we do a countywide advisory board, winter rec's gonna be a member of it. So, then I don't know if you really gotta go to both of those. I would definitely want somebody on the countywide one, you or Larry, whoever he decides, but to me, winter rec is like just the north group. It's not really the whole county, so to speak.
On the county one, I would like to see a commissioner on that. I think there is a strategic plan. I think that we, we definitely need a commissioner on that strategic planning committee for recreation.
And I think that's, that's...
I, I would just, I was just gonna back up for one second. Don't say, I do think winter, winter rec is for the whole county. I mean, it's basically talking about, you know, ski resorts on both ends of the valley. It's talking about all the different snowmobile parking areas, you know.
Has that both Tamarack and...
Lately, our, our conversations have been talking more about like the, uh, you know, the smaller, unimproved, you know, access points as well.
On winter rec, knowing that that's countywide, does the sheriff, do you guys engage on that at all, Patty? On the winter rec forum? Maybe, uh, we get the minutes. Maybe one of our, you know, if we, if we end up with a recreation deputy, maybe that's what we recommend is, you know, they, they serve on that also.
I've been going, I think, the last two times just to listen in. And, um, for me, it's, it's gonna be a part of this countywide group. I think that, I don't know, I think one of you guys should be on, but I don't think, know about a commissioner. We have plenty of other things to be involved with.
That's kinda what I was saying too. I think there's a couple of those that we can take off the commissioner's list.
Waterways, tell us about that. That's just basically, uh, the summer stop boating.
It's, you know, allocating the funding that we get and then coordinating with, um, Purple Turner and his staff, making sure that they have housing boats, the other equipment that they need, making sure that the buoys get put back in every year, and then, you know, the last couple of meetings have been really working on these, uh, grants with City McCall for their ramp and marina expansions up there. Working a little bit with Teresa, not Teresa Perry, I keep saying that, the IDPR down here.
Blake?
For their plans as well.
And I do think it is important to have somebody. I was going to that one for a while, and Dave and I switched because it was on Tuesday, so I was driving down for another meeting, 'cause they have it here at the ELC. But again, I think some of that, we wait and see who's, you know.
Well, the thing is, is what's gotta happen is that, like, the Pay-At-Forest Coalition, the lands allocation, Dave's gonna have to let them know that so-and-so's gonna be the new commissioner and make sure that we get included on the next meeting notification.
Well, and then I think we take this again and go through it and look at skills. You know, Aaron and Ed both have very different skillsets. So, Ed's got, you know, huge background in, in, uh, work, uh, with Forest Service, 'cause that's what he did.
His land, yeah, the land side is big for him.
Aaron is more communications-based, so I think until we know who's gonna be serving it, it's hard to...
I haven't met Aaron, so I don't know him. But I think in the meantime, if you wanna float both of our names, I guess, Dave, to some of these, and then they can determine. You know, but a lot of these aren't gonna happen now until next winter, and by then, we're gonna know who we want. Um, I would certainly be willing to take over the stip night one and the Pay-At-Forest Coalition, 'cause I've been involved with the coalitions a long time.
I'd like to see you on the stip night one. I think that's a deep conversation. I think we need to continue on that, and you've been there for the...
So, you'll let them know that I'll be taking your place. I can get ahold of, oh, I forgot her name already.
Melinda?
Melinda, thank you very much, ProVenture.
Yeah, she's not, she's not on that. She's actually not a part of that. It's their, their technical staff.
Oh, this is more technical stuff, huh?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
We've kinda done our part for most of that, I think.
The most part, yeah. I think, like I said, I think it's just important for us to just stay apprised of what's taking place, because as it evolves, I think there is going to be more of a need for us to be involved, especially on the roadside.
So, I'm gonna put my name by coalition and by stip night.
Recreation access, that was one of the big components that we commented on this year, January.
Yeah, and that's world-wide watching. Sure, do you wanna do waterways?
Again, do we need to assign these until we know who's...
Well, I think until we get this new commissioner on, it might take a couple of months for we even know.
Well, like, no, they're mandated two weeks, I think, or is it three weeks after?
Their timing is, they had to cut it off last Monday. They have to have a name to the governor within ten days and...
I think they've already submitted those.
Two weeks after that.
Well, we should know.
We're looking at it probably close to a month.
I think, I think you're looking at like two weeks from, maybe second week of April.
But even so, I think we still should have a contact person there that can handle it if something comes up between now and then.
I agree. So, okay, I'll do waterways. So, you took stip night and...
Pay-At-Forest Coalition. And groomer advisory, um, I can do that. I've been kind of going to those that, like I say, I don't think much is gonna happen now that summer's here, but... And we left Dave on winter rec and on the land allocation. That's the way it got in my head. Is that correct?
Recycling's not meeting pathways. I think we leave...
Yeah, leave Dave on pathways.
Very on that one. Your public lands for IAC, have you been engaged with that, or...
Uh, just, you know, yeah, periodically.
I'm already on two public lands, but those are the things we can try and put on whoever comes on, so.
I did send...
Anything other board that you know of that you're...
That I was getting off of, that, um, I, you know, like I said, I didn't have the updated list. There were like the key things. There's a lot of little ones, I think, that...
I'm looking at these U of I. We've gotta have somebody on that U of I. Well, that you're on that board now.
Oh, right.
Advisory board.
Well, I was informed that we're supposed to have a commissioner on the Cascade Senior Center Board Friday night, and I'm going...
No.
It can only take so much. But they have, there's a group of people gone in there and clean house on that senior center, and there's gonna be some big changes, I think, I hope. But you wanna do, what was the last one you talked about?
Uh, the U of I advisory board.
Yeah, you wanna do that one, don't you? Since you're involved with the fair and all that.
This one is...
One word to your mouth.
This one is Melissa's, no, the new person gets this one. This one is Melissa's focus on classes and community involvement with the extension office.
Yeah, it's like they're steering meetings.
Oh, it's steering committee, okay.
Yeah. So, I think we wait on some of these, and, and then we have this conversation again in thirty days when we know who's here and give the new person an opportunity to, to express their interest in some of these.
So, Gabby, I don't know if you need these for your minutes. There's a rough draft.
And YCAP, so just so you know, I, we, yeah, we had a meeting about two weeks ago, and I was very, very vocal in what needed to change for us to stay engaged. And they are really working hard on making that happen, so I've asked for all their policies and procedures. I have asked, and so now they're, they are reaching out. I, I had a conversation with them on Friday, about looking at some of those for them. They really do need some good, solid direction on that board.
Is Mark Shigeta still on that board, do you know?
I haven't seen him. So, I don't know the answer to that. There are commissioners, uh, let's see, who showed up last time? It, or Adams County, um, oh my goodness.
Vicky Purdy?
No, it wasn't Vicky. Uh, the guy with the football kit.
Oh, um...
Oh, my gosh, that's terrible. You and I are gonna be terrible. We gotta have somebody younger on this board so we can remember that our words.
Where the clerks are in there, maybe.
It's just too much in my brain to remember.
There's way too much going on right now.
How about Mike Paradis?
That one. Mike was at the last.
And then Payette County, do you know who comes from Payette County?
And that would be Mark, that I think, I don't, I didn't see him there. And I think maybe he is called out on that board.
Georgia Hannigan, Mark Shigeta, or Reese Herzic.
I think Shigeta is the one that's called out, but I flat said, you know, I'm very concerned as a fiscal responsibility for people that are supposed to be showing up to these meetings, and they're not. And I had a lot of questions on the financial side of things, and so they are, they are tightening up their financial policies. They'd gotten a lot of good direction from audits. And, uh, so I think they're doing the right thing, and, and I will make no hesitation in asking for additional information, so.
If there's anybody from Chamin County on that.
You know, we don't even have the fair board is on here. How did that happen?
Train. Yeah, throwing the health dish reek and all the stuff for the IAC.
Oh, it's overwhelming right now. I don't know, we don't have the road advisory board on here either.
I think we're forgetting something, but I can't remember what.
Well, it would be good to maybe have a conversation, um, you know, with Larry as far as what his plan is within that department. When everybody gets up and on going and see if there are other things here that we feel like we could, you know, push that direction, but I mean, it's been great, um, it's been great having like Mary go to the Southwest, whatever the other conservation district is, because that's her skillsets to write those grants. Maybe those are some of the things that we need to look at is who of our county team can also take on some of this.
Well, I think we got it pretty well covered. I'm sure we'll think of something later on, but this gives us a starting point, and then when we get the new person on board, we can weather them back out.
So, they've already had their interviews, Dave? And you think names have already gone to the...
I, I don't, I thought they were doing that last week, but I do not know for sure.
Did they get three, Dave, or did they just get two?
I think they only got two.
Okay, we're gonna move on down to our agenda. Our next item, if this is not an action item, but it's gonna take some movement on my part, these are service award presentations.
Somebody else all dressed up. Stan Buck coming? Is that the reason he was all dressed up?
During an interview, so.
Oh. Can we do the, the final plat approval and wait for anybody to get here, or...
Do you just have two?
Just one.
It's just one, okay.
So, that, that final plat approval was, was really just a placeholder that I asked Doug to put on there. I don't believe that they were able to get everything submitted on time, so, um...
Should we check with Cinda?
Yeah, let me go stick my head in, but I told Chris, when I talked to him, that I'd be willing to put a placeholder on, but it may need to be posted the following Monday, so.
If we don't have it, we could officially...
I don't think we have it, but I think it, but it can now process or go through the system now, because everything's been fixed.
And then who put the executive session on? Oki?
I believe so. He'll be here shortly, coming from the ELC.
Some anxious folks in Tamarack to get that plat approved, so they can...
I bet. See if we have concrete this year or not, or what, what else is backed up this year? There was an article or a television thing the other night that talked about China being shut down again. All of our supply chain just went eh again. So, see what ends up happening. Crazy. Ah, everybody's dressed up because you guys have interviews today. That's it. Now we know.
patrol's always dressed up.
Thought you were doing surveillance, so I was getting worried. It's like, aren't you supposed to be in an unmarked car somewhere?
You know, one thing I've noticed about a lot of your deputies is they keep scratching their head because all the hair's going on.
That means big, smart brains, right? Burns all the hair off the top?
Keep scratching, you'll figure it out. See what I mean?
So, shake your head yes.
On behalf of Valley County, thank you for your fifteen years of service and all your work.
Hey! I knew this was for...
You're in the wrong spot, Pat.
Of course I am. I'm in the wrong spot, 'cause I'm right behind you. Go move out somewhere and go up next to the wall.
Thank you all for...
Congratulations. So, what is this? This is how many years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Wow, you're only nineteen. That's really impressive.
My hair all fell out at nineteen. Thank you for your support and for standing up for law enforcement when a lot of government officials were not.
Absolutely. Where's your wife over here? You're supposed to be taking a picture with her.
She's working night shift.
Oh, got it.
She's home sleeping, huh?
Understood. Thanks for all your hard work.
Couldn't do without our team.
I mean, it's pretty impressive today with you guys all dressed up, so I'm just saying.
What are we all? Look pretty sharp, man. Think you oughta get off too.
We need a picture of that.
I don't know if I've ever seen Stanbuck in uniform.
Oh, come on.
I, I mean, like, maybe a shirt that says Valley County right here, like a golf shirt.
Yes, in the summer.
Why don't you guys, why don't you get closer and smile at us?
Pretend like you like each other. Look at that. That's awesome.
Exactly.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
All right. I have a question. Okay, so the contractor did the today for, for the jail. Sergeant LaCroix did come over and talk to me today and they really wanna do the lease versus the purchase in the long run, feel like that would be better in case some of those devices fail. I know there's a portion in there that, you know, there's a warranty, but, and then they provide batteries as well when you, when you're leasing. I just felt like that would be better. He's talked to other facilities. And so it's the same contract except for we, the wording in it was that we would, we would lease or purchase rather than lease. So I don't know if we have to put that on the agenda again or if you can amend your.
But it'll still be the 15,000.
That, the, the, the first year, everything's the same. We just have to put that in there so that they know next year to budget us, that it's a lease, not a purchase.
Can you go back and look at that?
Do we have to redo that?
How do we amend something that's already been approved, Brian?
Motion.
I think we need to get the contract language correct. If we're going to change what you signed, then let's change, change the agreement and re-sign, re-sign the docs.
So on page one, it specifically states in this agreement, the supplier agrees to lease the equipment and provide the services.
And then Mike had sent something to me saying, you know, that we'd save if we had, if we leased or if we purchased, so that's what I had said. But if it's already in agreement written in here, I think your, the verbiage is just that they agreed that they would, the commissioners that, that we would purchase, although the contract does say lease on that first page.
It doesn't say purchases, approve the guardian RFD for Valley County. Doesn't say lease.
And it'll be our understanding that we will pay the, in the future, the 5,039 for the lease versus, there's two columns.
So what do you think? Oh, do we need to go back and change that motion?
Just the verbiage. Or re-send, redo this.
I, I just don't know what you signed. I'm confused at what you signed.
The motion says, need a motion to approve the guardian RFD for Valley County Jail, period.
And it says 60-month lease agreement.
Whatever it says on that, yeah.
Is what you approved. I was confused in the first place.
Depends what the document said. If the document says, and not purchase, then you'd have to redo it.
Base rent, you know, basically, here's only 170 per month.
Purchase is that if you don't, if you lease is that annually after the year. And that's why it says purchase, but the lease is all the, as if we are going to lease it. If you wanna re, look at this.
Uh, well, I, I want you guys to look at it and make sure you understand and know what you're signing.
Yes.
That's the most important part because you're gonna have to manage the contract, not me. So, so let's.
I'll give you the whole thing and you guys look at it. If you wanna delay it or if you wanna have time to go through it.
What is it, what does it say we did there? Did we purchase or do, we didn't, we didn't put it in the motion?
About purchase, and I think that that's what your motion was, but the paperwork says lease.
I believe that it just says that we moved to approve the.
The RFD.
Yeah, and it, it specifically states lease. That's why I was confused because it says a five-year lease and yet I couldn't figure out why we were purchasing a five-year lease.
Right.
So, so, but in my opinion, we, we approved the document and we approved a lease, not a purchase.
So if your contract reflects that, if your contract reflects a lease and that's what you've signed.
That's what we would make sure.
Then we just double check to make sure that that is, that is the document that's signed. So there's no misunderstanding regarding going forward, whether we're purchasing or leasing.
This whole thing says lease, lease termination date, all terms are all, they're all lease-based.
When I, when I review contracts, I don't look at where the budget's coming from, how much it's gonna cost, so. You know, I, that, that's part of managing agreement that is administrative, not legal, so. You know, it's up to, it's up to the sheriff's office whether they wanna purchase or lease. I don't care.
Well, and this whole agreement talks about if we cancel this lease, that we have to return the equipment back within so many days. So I mean, it was, it was all pointed toward a lease.
I just wanna make sure that it was correct before we send this back to them. And when I look at it, it's all in the lease agreement, but I had mentioned purchase of the devices.
The, the page you showed me showed both purchase and lease, but it doesn't indicate which, what, which, which is the one we're selecting.
In your motion, it has to show that we are taking the, we are paying for the lease.
Well, if I remember right, the only lease agreement that we got showed the 5,039.
For the hardware. That would've been for the hardware.
Well, that's the annual lease agreement. It's 5,039 because we were renting. We never got a document. That's why I, I don't know where the 3,000 came because we didn't get that document.
There's a, a, a document on page six that shows that, not on, this lease was on a separate document that was given to me.
Do we have that document, Sheriff? That, I don't remember ever, I read through this thing and I don't remember ever seeing the $3,000 amount. The only thing I ever saw was the $5,000.
We have a 60-day notice of termination, so that's all I'm concerned about.
We're going for this versus that.
Yeah.
And I think in the contract, it states all these add-ons. I just wanna make sure that in your motion that it was as the per the lease, not. From your verbiage, it follows the original contract.
So, Oak, should we amend our motion to state that this is a lease?
Just to make sure.
Whatever your. Your motion, your motion to approve is not as important as the documents that we sign. That, that's gonna be the contract that we have to follow. So if your motion was broad enough to just approve the agreement in general, I'm fine. You don't need to go back and change that. What I think is critically important is to ensure that that contract calls out specifically that we're entering into a lease for this equipment, for this equipment and not a purchase. Because there's at least one page in there that the sheriff just showed me that it can be one or the other. And it, and that particular page didn't say which one we're selecting.
I think it was just more of a cover page, not when we're into, into the garden here.
Got you.
That's what Mike had given me, so like the actual contract. Everything says lease.
Everybody good with this? I think we're okay. I'm trying to find more specific language. We're good?
Good. As long as the motion in our minutes just said we approve the document or they approve the.
Yeah, that's what it said. But the lease is a little bit different money than the purchase.
That has to do with the one, or the maintenance.
Maintenance stuff. Oh, come on, where is it? The thing that's got built in it, Oak, is it's got a 60-day get-out clause. I think we're gonna be okay. And hope we're not screwing up here. Manage all the hardware. Manage all the software. I think we're okay. Okay, I think we're good, Sheriff. Hey, our next agenda item is an action item. This is final plat approval for Tamarack and I think Oak has a, or said, I don't know who's gonna present this, but basically we've, you wanna come up and explain it? We're off the hook.
Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, this last week I filed a, or signed a stipulation to dismiss the lawsuit between Idaho Pacific Investments and Valley County. That clears the way for Tamarack to continue on with their development of Aspen Glade and Crest Court subdivisions. So, um, the day that that was settled, the lawsuit was settled between us and Idaho Pacific, there were some calls here to our building department to move forward with getting building permits, but that can't occur until we get final plat approval for the subdivision. So, uh, Chris Kirk had called me wanting to know what the next steps were to get all that done. And he was gonna push hard over the weekend to try and get everything submitted for final plat approval. And I told him I would, I would put a placeholder on the agenda for today just in case he was able to do it, but it didn't seem like it was likely. So, and with, with Cindy being on travel status, uh, even less likely. So, uh, it, it appears we're gonna have to hold this over, uh, for another board meeting so they can finish getting all those final pieces of information to Cindy so they can put a packet together and, and present it and so you can, uh, consider the final plat and decide whether or not you wanna, wanna approve or not. So, uh, as I'm sure you're aware, there's been some, some, some builders that are anxious to get moving forward, getting building permits on these projects and, and they wanna get going as soon as, as soon as possible. So, uh, there isn't any real emergency, uh, just, uh, just trying to accommodate the requests of, of the builders that are involved in this, so.
So Cindy, when do you think that plat will be coming?
I haven't, they haven't reached out to me.
Okay.
I don't have my lawyers. I don't have any of their final documents.
So we'll just wait and get it on the agenda when you get it.
When we get it, we'll put the plat package together and get it on the internet.
But in the meantime, still no building permits. Okay. All right, thanks for coming in. Our last agenda item today is an action item. This is an executive session for Idaho Code 742061F, which is, deals with litigation. At this time, I'd entertain a motion.
Next motion, we go into executive session for Idaho Code 742061F.
A second.
Uh, roll call, please.
King and I.
Off and I.
Esprah Kai and Gabby will be in at 12:05. I will text you when we come out. If you'll turn us off, that'd be great.